You ready? Nina, we're ready. The school board of the Duval County School District is now convened in a special meeting. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present. The Duval County School Board is here to set policy and for the district that will improve student achievement and address other business items that require vote of the board. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. It is not the role of the board to make managerial or operational decisions. The board has policies and procedures in place to assist the superintendent in resolving management and operational issues. As a show of courtesy and respect to each other, we ask that all mobile phones be turned off and that no flash photography be used during the meeting. For those wishing to address the board during our public comment portion of the board meeting, please note that pursuant to board policy, we accept the speaker cards for the meeting until the published time to start this meeting. Thank you for taking the time to join us and for your interest in the operation of the Duval County School District. Approval of board member participation. Pursuant to board policy two point two six, board members may attend board meetings and participate and vote through the use of interactive video and/or telephone systems. The Duval County School Board approved the participation of board member Darryl Willie via interactive video and/or telephone systems. I ask for a motion.
So move.
Moved by board member Hershey, seconded by vice chair Anderson. Any discussion? Hearing none, I ask for your vote.
Just one moment, Mr. Chair. Vice Chair Anderson, your vote. Board member Willie, can you hear us?
I can.
If you could regis- oh, I'm sorry.
I don't go on this one for it yet.
We've been virtual so long and I forgot how to vote in person.
It popped up.
It was six, the vote was six to zero.
Five.
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 Let's move ours in here.
Oh, five to zero. Thank you, I missed that. Public comment. We are now on the public comment portion of our agenda. Speaker cards were only accepted for this meeting until the published time to start this meeting. The school board welcomes your comments on matters that are before the board for consideration. It is not the board's intent to respond but to use the input in our deliberations. To give everyone appropriate respect and courtesy, please refrain from audible comments or applause. When you are called upon, please state your name for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. You will be notified when thirty seconds remain and when your time is up. If your concerns exceed that time, you may present written comments to the board. You are asked to refrain from references to specific individuals. Please remember that speaker cards were only accepted until the published time to start this meeting. Thank you for taking your time to address the board. And vice chair.
Thank you, Chair. First, we have Whitney Reddick, followed by Tim Miller.
Good afternoon. My name is Whitney Reddick, and I am a Duval County Public School Special Education Teacher. I am reading this statement on behalf of Zachary Carter, Jamesy Davis, Taylor DeSantis, Suzanne Slavinsky, Brittany Best, Marcella Swanson, Katie Howard, Hannah Sherman, Kimberly Elwood, Berlinda Hicks, Candice Rosenberg, Doug and Sheila Peroni, Tammy humans, Amber Kootnik, Marissa Carr, Elizabeth Ross, Denise Montero, Alexandra Dixon, Deborah Grunendike, Karen Skipnan, Ebony Pearson, Katie Sedano, Jessica Chandler, Kyle Dean, and Genevieve Kelly. I would like you all to imagine twenty-six adults standing behind me in support of this statement and in support of me. Some are parents, some are custodial staff, some are paraprofessionals, all of them are teachers. I first have to acknowledge my principal and express my support for her, and I'm so thankful to have her in my life and as a leader. So with that, when contemplating the return to school, I have no doubt that the discussion is difficult and pacifying all parties is going to be a tough feat. However, starting school in a face-to-face setting is a dangerous outset. The cost both monetarily and to safely do so is not a track I am willing to place our students, my peers, or myself on as a stakeholder. I think it is important to put a comment with a face, to understand and feel the true intentions of our words. I think it's important to look at each of you, whether you look away because my words make you uncomfortable, you stare to intimidate, or if you are truly trying to understand me, my stance, my being, and my spirit. I have left, left the house twice for nonessential purposes since spring break. Not for fear, but because I care about my fellow American. I wanted to help stop the spread. The first purpose, to stand alongside my fellow Black Americans in Jacksonville, to help shine a light on conscious and unconscious biases, to be their support when their knees get weak from screaming, grieving for their lost brothers and sisters, being there when their legs give out from trying to just get recognition of injustice. And the second is now, to stand alongside my fellow educators, to stand up for our worth, for all educational staff members' worth. Every job in a school is a teacher. From our front office staff, who you see first, to our janitorial staff, who you don't see because they are silent defenders. I stand here for them. But man, my knees are starting to get weak. My voice is hoarse. I don't know how much longer I can try to scream out to a brick wall. I don't risk leaving the house because I have a son, a beautiful baby boy with the best crinkle new smile and laugh. Because I have a husband who is my hero, my support and my love. I am someone's daughter, I am someone's friend, I am somebody's whole world. We have heard this statement that schools must be open for our students in poverty. There's also a group of children that are more susceptible to COVID nineteen. The research shows that the risk of more severe cases are with people of color. Unfortunately, those two gro- groups have an overlap. We have the moral responsibility to care for our community. Not only do I teach students who are Black and Latino, I teach a very vulnerable population of students of special needs, and they are more susceptible to illness. From the CDC, I quote, "People with disabilities often are at greater risk from health problems that can be prevented as a result of having a specific disability or other mental health condition can occur." Why is their safety not being accounted for? Why is mine not? I am here to give them a voice, so hear me loud and clear when I say, "The worst among us often takes away the best of us." Please do not be one of the worst.
Ms. Reddick, Ms. Reddick, thank you. Your, your three minutes is up. We appreciate it. You can submit the re- the rest of that for the record, please, please, please. No applause. Thank you.
And it looks like we might be having some technical difficulty with our light system here, so just be aware of that. Thank you, Ms. Reddick. Mr. Tim Miller.
Good afternoon. My name is Tim Miller. I appreciate all the work that you folks are doing, the board and staff. Because it's, it's very difficult. I'm sure you're working on a million different things at one time. But reviewing the plan, I do understand that is just a, a plan for the, for state submission. I do have concerns about some ESC comments that are in there. On page thirteen, says ESC students, ESC services identified in IP. Students will receive the ESC services identified on the IEP to the greatest extent feasible. If it's on the IEP, it has to be provided. I understand it might be difficult in some delivery methods, but need determined services, not delivery method. On page twenty and twenty-one, says based on the review of the data collected and student academic performance recommendations will be made to the IEP team for additional services. IEP is also contains social and emotional services, which must be taken into account. I didn't see that mentioned in the plan. My son is on the defer- deferment program, so all of his accommodations and services are in that social emotional category. And without it being mentioned specifically, I'm afraid it might fall through the cracks. But I'm sure you guys know, not gonna let that happen. It also says that progress monitoring will be reviewed every four to six weeks to determine if additional supports are necessary. Progress monitoring four to six weeks means by the time you do the monitoring, you schedule the meeting, you have the meeting, you've lost a quarter. So you've lost an entire nine weeks if you're only looking at that data every four to six weeks. This wouldn't be acceptable in a general ed classroom where you let a child fail for a quarter and then say, hey, let's have an intervention, let's do something. So it should not be also acceptable for ESC students. On pages twenty-two and twenty-three, it refers to supports for ELL students. And there it says, "Students receive ongoing progress monitoring. Teachers will need to provide documentation of instructional supports being implemented." And it says, "The district will create recorded professional development sessions available to all DCBS teachers." I'm glad the ELL students are getting those additional supports, but why aren't those supports available for ESC? You know, this is exactly why the ESC community feels like an afterthought and why they reach out to me personally a lot, because they're afraid to come forward. We need to make sure that the ESC students are given all benefits or all the accommodations they're entitled to under FATE and IDEA, because we need to make sure they are successful just like the rest of the students.
Five seconds.
Until we start doing that, ESC is going to continue to be an issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Darlene Miller, followed by Sheri Johnson.
Good afternoon.
A little bit louder.
Good afternoon. I appreciate all the hard work and all the hours you have put into the plan. I am here today to address some more equality. You know, all children don't go home to the same households. And I know my opinion is very not popular here today, but that's okay. Because my heart is in. You don't know what children go home to. All households are not created equal. You don't know if they're gonna leave school, go home to an abusive or not. All parents are not created equal. All internet services are not created equal. They can get free internet sometimes. You can get cheap internet, but it is cheap internet. So a child sits there at home, trying to do home learning, and all their computer is doing is buffering. Meanwhile, the lesson's over. Somewhere along the way, we have to still reach out and teach and make sure we are reaching all children. My oldest struggled throughout his entire school career. Struggled. My husband and I both have college degrees. We both have a nurturing house, a two-parent house. We were able to do things for our children that others couldn't. I was told point-blank by the experts that I hired to help us, if your child did not perform the household he comes from, he would have dropped out. All I'm asking is somehow we create plans, but we understand we need to reach all our children somehow, some way, and make sure we are educating them. It doesn't take a whole lot. I know we have studies on if you retain children that
Thirty seconds.
dropping out goes up. What happens if they keep falling behind? And behind. I understand it's a touchy subject. I understand people are emotional. But my husband and I are just as emotional because we see it with our youngest child. He has social emotional needs. He doesn't have academic needs. But we watched him since March regress, and regress at a faster rate than what he perverts.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Up next, we have Cherie Johnson. I'm also getting some communication that the sound, are you fixing the? Yeah. People are having a hard time hearing them. Ms. Johnson?
Move music, Mr.? Good afternoon. My name is Cherie Johnson, and I've been an elementary school teacher in Duval County for six years. First, I want to say thank you for the work that you do and being committed to this work, especially during this pandemic. Please know that I pray for you as leaders in this city, and I ask that God continues to guide you and protect you as you make decisions for us and our children. I came here today to address the lack of choice for teachers. The first plan to return to school left teachers and staff with a lack of choice. You asked teachers, parents, and staff what they preferred, and in an effort to only please parents, you announced that students will be allowed to physically return to school. The second plan offers teachers' choice, but only to certain teachers. We have the choice between returning to work physically with students or compete for Duval homeroom slash virtual school positions. The fact that there are prerequisites and qualifications in place diminishes the idea that every teacher's health is a concern, and it erases the choice you sought to give us. The number one qualifying factor to be considered for a virtual teaching position should be the teacher's desire to be and stay in good health. As a part of the choice you gave us, Duval homeroom teachers will be asked to report to a site for accountability purposes. I also understand that if a teacher that returned to work with students has to quarantine, they must do so from home. If a teacher is expected to quarantine from home, what does their accountability measures look like? And why can't those same measures be put in place for Duval homeroom teachers? Also, what if a quarantined teacher begins to have COVID symptoms? What will happen to the class during their recovery time? Furthermore, teachers are parents too. I'm a single mother of a five-year-old entering kindergarten. This plan leaves me no choice but to walk into that school building with my child. I can't protect him anymore because of the muted expectations our society has for teachers to do things that we actually do naturally as a result of the genuine relationship and bonds that develop from spending one hundred and eighty days with our students. We are teachers, not healthcare workers. When they ask for the public to stay home to flatten the curve and stop the spread, that included us. We did it without question as they worked to save lives. There is no reason you can give that says the public desire trumps public health. I have taught in a school where students were killed because of gun violence. I have attended funerals in support of my students. It's hard to protect our kids from gun violence and impossible to protect them from a death of a family member, but we have succeeded at protecting our children from COVID nineteen. I do not want to attend a funeral for my students who have died from COVID nineteen. I am asking that you revise this plan to include a choice for teachers who are also parents so that we can continue to protect our children and teach our students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Chris Guerrieri, followed by Stephanie Simchek.
Good afternoon, Chris Guerrieri. So I'm getting my notes together to come up here to talk to you guys, and the news comes on, and they say Florida breaks the record for deaths yesterday. And the record they broke yesterday was from the day before, and that, that record was from the Thursday before. And we know deaths and hospitalizations lag behind cases. A, a month ago, we were averaging about two thousand cases. Now we're averaging ten thousand cases. So what's it gonna look like in a month from now? I, I think it's gonna look a lot worse than it does. Those aren't my notes, by the way. I would like to talk about leadership. Good leaders don't expect their followers to do things that they would not. They lead by example. So as I look at the board, I was wondering if you would mind conducting the meeting while wearing your masks? If you expect teachers to wear their masks, then it stands to reason you should have your mask, you should have your mask on during your meetings. Then I would like the board to commit to going to their largest school and spend the day, every day that teachers were expected to be there, and not just in the office, but in halls and classes. If this is the expectation for teachers, then as good leaders, you should be willing to do it too. Yesterday at the press conference, DeSantis said Commissioner Corbin's order was guidance and not a hard and fast order for districts, and districts decide, decide how they operate their schools. This means you control what education looks like in Duval County. You control if we are going into school to risk our lives or not. And then this. This is from the difference, districts waiver to cancel emergency drills, something that is amazingly surreal. "The COVID nineteen pandemic is a monumental and unprecedented challenge emerging quickly and demanding an immediate overhaul of instructional plans and school operations around the country." I couldn't have written anything better. I mean, that's what you guys are saying to get out of doing emergency drills, yet at the same time, you're sending in this, sending us into classes. This begs the question, if you know how dangerous, then why are you forcing children and teachers into school? Especially when there is a viable op- option. Since Gov- Governor DeSantis passed the buck back to you, you are making the choice to risk our lives. And that's what you are doing. You're risking lives. Everyone in this room knows it. It's not a matter of if people get sick and schools close, but when.
Thirty seconds.
If you know, alright, I, I wanna skip down to the end, then I guess. I started talking about leadership. Well, sometimes leadership isn't doing the easy thing. Leadership is doing the right thing. The right thing here is to keep your staff and students safe. Please instruct Dr. Green to come with the, up with a completely distance learning plan. And finally, I'm gonna give you two things that I came up with, with a, a group of teachers. One's a plan to stop some children from falling through the cracks, and another is for, a way for ESC students to get their services. And then I'm also gonna leave you a picture of my wife, because not only are you risking my life, you're risking hers as well.
Thank you, Mr. Guerrieri. Next, we have Stephanie Simchek, followed by Shannon Russell Hines.
I'm a school counselor.
Put, put the microphone down and state your name for the record, please.
Stephanie Simchek. And I'm a school counselor here in Duval County. I haven't heard much said about us. In the last two years, I've been sick eleven times. From, you know, it's, it's things that I can get through, colds, flus. I have a low immune system. I know I'll catch COVID. I know I'll get through COVID, but I can't say the same for anybody that comes around me and contracts it for me. I work with a lot of students that have health issues, and I work with very vulnerable teachers. I am exhausted at this point. I've never been so scared in my life to go back to school, and I tried a few days ago, like downplaying this, thinking, you know, we'll be fine, you know, maybe nobody will get sick. But why am I doing that? Why am I creating this false perception of reality so that we can go back to school in person and just react? I don't wanna react. I know virtual learning can be successful. We did it already. If we spend time now just training our teachers, doing workshops, we can prepare ourselves to effectively reach these students. I, as a counselor, have already come up with many ways to do Zoom meetings and ways to help my students get to the college application process and meet their mental health needs. I'm in correspondence with many of my students now who are also very scared to go back to school. They want to still remain as a Stanton student with their teachers. All the choices are confusing. I have parents messaging me saying, what if I do this? What if I do that? Will my student be able to come back? It's just a very confusing process. If you just have one path, you go through virtual learning until it's safe to come back. It's just temporary. Years from now, we'll remember this was just a temporary thing. However long it takes, three months, but we save lives. The point is to save lives. I spent the first Friday of last school year attending one of my students' funerals. I don't want to do that again for any faculty member or any student. I know that this is deadly. I know that this is something that we shouldn't be. I'm sorry.
You have one minute. You're doing great.
I, I just know, we're gonna have to react to this. It's going to be a reactionary thing instead of proactive. And we, as educators, we are always proactive and preventative about everything that we do. As a counselor, I'm preventative. I prevent students from impeding themselves. We take actions in that regard. Why can't we just do this?
Thirty seconds.
I don't want any regrets. Later on in life, we're like, well, all these funerals, all these people that died, I guess we were right. Please, what is the worst that could happen to you as a district? We support you. If you decide to make this go fully virtual, we will support you and fight for that decision. We are behind you on this. I wasn't allowed in my building for the last three months of the school year, and it was hard, but I never got sick. I haven't been sick since March, and that's been kind of, you know, great, but at the same time, I don't.
Thank you, Ms. Simchek. Thank you, Ms. Simcik. Next, we have Russell, excuse me, Shannon Russell Hines, followed by Scott Sowell.
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Shannon Russell. Can you hear me? My name is Shannon Russell Hines, and I am a teacher at Sandawood High School. And you probably know that we are the largest school in our district with an average of 3,000 students. I've had several teachers reach out to me with valid concerns about our in-person return to school next year for teachers, Perez, UOPD, administrators, and students. And so I'm here today because I have been asked to remind you of our bargaining language. Under Article Six Employment Conditions, Section M, our contract language for clean and safe conditions says this. "The employer shall provide clean classrooms, restrooms, work areas, cafeterias, and other facilities used by employees subject to reasonable limitations. The employee shall make all reasonable efforts to maintain her/his work area in safe condition, including reporting observed needs to the principal or her/his designated appropriate administrator. Each employee shall be furnished a safe place of employment as defined in the laws of Florida and the United States, specifically Florida Statutes 235.06 and the Florida's Workers' Compensation Act, Florida Statute 440.56," which states, "Every employer, as defined in FS440.02, shall furnish employment which shall be safe for employees therein, furnish and use safety devices and safeguards, adopt and use methods and processes reasonably adequate to render such an employment in place of employment safe, and do every other thing reasonably necessary to protect the life, health, and safety of such employees. As used in this section, the terms "safe" and "safety" as applied to any employment or place of employment shall mean such freedom from danger as is reasonably necessary for the protection of life, health, and safety of employees or the public, including conditions and methods of sanitation and hygiene." The people who have reached out to me that wanted me to share and remind you of this language, wanted to convey, they are willing to work. We are all willing to work. We are willing to work with you because we know we need to push back, but we are not willing to do it in such a manner that endangers our lives, our students, and the lives of others. Thank you.
Scott Sowell, followed by Camille Mansell.
Hi, everybody. So I started teaching in 1995.
Your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Scott Sowell. I teach at Darnell Cookman. So it's been 25 years, and I've seen some stuff come and go, and some odd issues and weird problems, but this hands down is the biggest thing I think we faced. So I'm not, people have said it more eloquently than I have, but I do not want to vilify the going back to school option brick and mortar. I think people have done that better than me. I think it verges on educational malpractice to put us back into the building. What I do want to advocate for is online learning. We're really, really good at that. There were definitely some problems in the spring. We resolved them. We figured them out. There's issues of equity. There's issues of access, but I want to celebrate what we can do virtually. And just to remind us that I hope that there's not a deficit view of teachers' abilities to teach online being the driving force of us going back to school and brick and mortar. Thank you.
Thank you. Camille Mansell, followed by Carrie Burke McLeod.
Hi, my name is Camille Mansell. I am a elementary Spanish teacher at Bridge Prep Academy. I, 2019 and 2020 was my first year teaching. I am struggling because I want to go back to school. I know that our students need us, but I know that it is not safe. And I cannot, in good conscience, stand in front of my students and be able to tell them that I can assure their safety with the plan to return to school as it is. Until the levels of spread have been lowered, I believe that we should support all that we can in online learning and supporting parents in online learning because they are the ones that we're having, along with teachers, but they are the ones that we're having issues with that. We were trying to, you know, establish our and adapt our lessons, but we, our parents need help too. And I believe that if we focus on giving them that support, then online learning would be more successful. The teachers are already doing what they need to be doing and above and more in regards to that. Once levels are met, I am, I believe that it would be a good idea to have students in school, but if a school has a case, the CDC recommends shutting down for two weeks. Why not implement that into our schedule where we have two weeks in school and then two weeks out with remote learning? Or if that's just not simply, I understand that parents need, have needs, why not do half a day kindergarten through second grade and then an hour of cleaning and then the other half of day, third through fifth grade? I believe that that would help us. We're, it's things that are being doing in businesses in terms of social distancing. I believe that staggering schedules would be the best for that, but I'm truly struggling because I know that teaching is my dream, but I cannot, I cannot go back in good conscience and in good faith to my students and stand in front of them and tell them that I know that they are gonna be okay. I would like for you to take that into consideration. We have options. Compromise can be done.
Thank you. Carrie Burke McLeod, followed by William Hudson.
Good afternoon. My name is Carrie Burke McLeod, and my address is on fire. I wanted to take a moment to be appreciative of one of Superintendent, this superintendent's colleagues, Superintendent Runcie. Superintendent Runcie is the superintendent of Broward County Public Schools, and the superintendent said that they will not be returning to brick and mortar schools this year. That was about two days ago. I appreciate that audacity. I think, I understand you're in a different position because you're in a consolidated government, and you might be scared of what the government or what the mayor might do, but that's not an excuse to turn tail and run and risk sickness and risk death like I think a lot of my colleagues have spoken of today. Now, let's assume for a moment that that's a pipe dream. Let's assume for a moment that all of those petitions are falling on deaf ears and that you're just gonna go ahead and approve the plan regardless of what we say. Don't do that because there's two very tangible differences you can make to make this reopening safer. They're very minor. Duval homeroom. This has kind of been a half-truth, half-lie coming out from the county in terms of teachers will be able to work Duval homeroom, but what a lot of people don't know if you're not an educator is that you're gonna have teachers be in physical classrooms or in physical schools while working from Duval homeroom. If some of the members of the board are able to stay home, I, gosh, I wish I could do that. I think, I wish they could do that too because a lot of my colleagues have kids that they need to help raise. If you're sending them back, you're having to, you're forcing them to take their students, send them back into the schools as well. You are forcing that. If they die, if they get sick, you are complicit in that. That's all I knew. And some of them are taking care of older, of their older parents as well. Don't force them to have to take care of themselves. If they're working Duval homeroom, allow them to at least stay home. That's the least you can do. Give, take all the applications to Duval homeroom or send them. Give an extra three days and then have people apply again. That's a very minor change you can do. Second change you can do, and this is a full lie that has been coming from this county, is masks will be mandated.
Thirty seconds.
Because that's not enforceable. You haven't actually changed the code of conduct. I can't even write a referral on a student or impart discipline for something if they're breaking the rule. You need to be able to do that. How are you gonna expect kids to wear these voluntarily when all they're hearing from the government is how it's gonna affect the elderly? Because listen here, this plan today, if you pass it, everyone's saying, kids will get sick, so will parents. Kids will die, so will parents. And by the way, I'll mention four of your reelection, so your public service career might die along with those. Be aware of that, please. And I wonder by the end of my comment, how many people more have gotten sick? How many more people have died in these 180 seconds I've had to talk? Thank you for listening, if you were.
Mr. Hudson, William Hudson, followed by Savannah Ridgely.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me? My name is William Hudson. I'm an engineering design and robotics teacher from Mayport Middle School. Last year, when I was 64, my kids won every trophy for robotics in the state of Florida, and we won trophies at the international competition. Sorry, it's hard to breathe with all this stuff. The point is that I was 64 when we did that. I'm 65 now. I'm still an asset to this school district, but I cannot go into a face-to-face classroom. I can't. I have a family. They love me. All right, I'm having trouble breathing now for more reasons than this. I'm a scientist. I have 30 years' experience in science. The data is perfectly clear. The risk to anyone who walks into a school building is extremely high. It's irresponsible to open schools face-to-face. It just is. I hate to do this to you because I appreciate that all of you people are public servants. I know how hard you've been working on this plan. I think it's too easy to defer decisions to the state agencies. This is your decision. We're talking about devil's arithmetic here. There are lots of different ways you can estimate mortality that have come from opening schools. But if people die, they're not gonna blame Richard Corbin. They're gonna blame you. That's a reality. I'm sorry. I would not like to be in your chair, Professor. I can't read my notes. Just to reiterate, I'm 65. On normal conditions, I have plenty of energy and skill and ability to teach. I can't enter the classroom because of my age and underlying health conditions right now. I'm a year and a half from retirement. I think there are probably hundreds of teachers in my situation. Please don't make us make this choice. You'll lose good teachers, but I'll lose my retirement. I think that is probably a good place to end. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Savannah Ridgely, followed by Alex Ingram.
Distinguished members of the board, my name is Savannah Ridgely, and I am a science teacher at William M. Raines High School. While I fully recognize that the board is working to accommodate the state executive order, the plan as outlined does not appear sensible, safe, or aligned to the very standards that I'm expected to teach. I am concerned that my students will be disproportionately affected by synchronous learning requirements. Many have siblings. All cannot share a laptop to be online at the same time. Many work, and their families cannot afford for them not to. Many just do not have stable, reliable internet connections. With these sorts of concerns in mind, it is baffling to me that we would fail to accommodate our students for the sake of football practice. Further, for these same problems, it will be these students who are forced back into in-person instruction, regardless of whether or not they feel safe, as they have not been sufficiently accommodated otherwise. To this end, staff participating in Duval homeroom are still required to report to a school building. This defeats the intent of reducing population sites on campus. Neither does it reduce our exposure. And should our homeroom enrollment drop, we too would be forced back into our classrooms even if we do not feel safe. And of course, every teacher knows the importance of standards-aligned instruction. When we teach standard SC 912 L1452, explain the basic functions of the human immune system, including specific and non-specific immune response, vaccines, and antibiotics, we do a lab in which only one student has an infected cup of water. But by the time everyone has interacted with just five people, nearly everyone's cup tests positive. We do this to show how infection spreads through a community, and it's frequently memorable for students as a tangible example. This concept, as a piece of this standard, is a part of the biology curriculum, which means we expect our children to master it in order to graduate high school. How can we require that understanding from our students if we put them back in overfilled classrooms as cases rise during a global pandemic? The only plan that truly keeps our students and staff safe is distance learning. I know I have highlighted concerns, but for everything that has been invested in dividers and increased busing, surely we can better equip our communities to genuinely show concern for the lives at stake.
Thirty seconds.
Even if it means working to challenge the state further than a hybrid model already does. Because attending school should not be a death sentence for anyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex Ingram, followed by our last public speaker, Rachel Baron.
My name is Alex Ingram. I live in Duval County District. I am also a teacher of seventh grade civics and AP Government. I have reviewed Dr. Green's plan. I think it is lacking, to say the best. So I am a founding member of an online group that has about 2,000 people in it that is willing to take collective action, that is willing to take collective action to save our children, to save our own lives, and to save the lives of the community. I got into education to do amazing things, to work miracles, and I do in my classroom every single day, but there is a miracle that I cannot do. I cannot save children's lives with cardboard and glue sticks. I can do a lot of amazing things with cardboard and glue sticks, though. So my recommendation is that we do not open schools until we see 14 days of zero new cases. That is the only way we can follow the scientist's recommendation, the CDC's recommendation, for a safe return to school. If you are not willing to do that, might I like, I'd like to respond a way that you can improve the current plan. Currently, Duval homeroom is not being offered to the most vulnerable teachers and teachers with the most vulnerable family members. It should be. That should be the priority, not three years in the district. Because there are people who have been teaching for a long time, right? Longer than I've been alive, that have come to this district to make an impact that would not qualify for priority status. Mask mandate in the classroom is a part of the code of conduct. Let me enforce a mask mandate. Because I can enforce that. If you give me consequences, I will enforce them. Do not make, please do not make it a zero tolerance policy because we know how zero tolerance policies get carried out in the real world. It won't be in my classroom, but in other classrooms is what I am concerned about. Relying on the Department of Health is unacceptable. They do not have the funding. They do not have the manpower to show up and test schools. There are thousands of schools in Florida that they are responsible for. They cannot one by one shut down schools. Dr. Green, you can. Board members, you can. You can be quick and responsive. That's why we've structured our government.
Thirty seconds.
Have a federal, state, and local level because the government that is closest to the people can be most responsive to the people. Additionally, I would like to see the mayor, Curry, Governor DeSantis, President Trump, they seem really gung-ho about opening up the economy if they feel that way. I challenge them to give us the ability to test students with a 24-hour turnaround maximum because that is the only way that we can keep students safe is by having accurate information because we know the Department of Health is politically compromised. We know that CDC is politically compromised. And number four, cancel all state and district mandates. And number four, cancel all state and district mandates, uh, uh, required testing. You cannot standardize, use standardized testing to look at and evaluate, uh, uh, children that are on an online environment and an in-person environment. Hazard pay for teachers, smaller class sizes-
Time is up, Mr. Ingram. I apologize.
Is a requirement. We will not go back. We will not be going-
Thank you, sir.
Um, our final speaker today is Rachel Baron.
Good after, good afternoon. My name is Rachel Baron. First, I would like to thank you for your work, but I would also like to point out that the board is not comfortable with a full room here, but they do want to send teachers back to have full classrooms. I think we all know that teachers and school employees want to come back to school. We miss our jobs and our students. We all want things to go back to normal. But just because you want something really badly does not mean that thing is safe. We are relying on you to protect our students and protect our staff. I know this is an incredibly challenging time, and we are in uncharted waters. That makes it all the more important that we take our time and make safety a priority. There is no reason to rush to open on August tenth, when things are changing daily and cases are increasing. Other districts in Florida have delayed their start date, and it is irresponsible of Duval to not do so. Once we start school, we need to pursue a course of action that is well thought out and places an emphasis on safety. Any teacher who does not feel comfortable returning to brick-and-mortar schools needs to be offered a virtual position. Teachers who choose to return, choose. Nobody should be forced. But teachers who choose to return need to be guaranteed hazard pay. We also need to address class sizes immediately. Last year, I had twenty-seven elementary school students in my classroom. Are there twenty-seven people even in this room right now? My classroom is a lot smaller than this room. Can you ensure me that my class sizes will be smaller? So that way I can keep my hea-, so that way it will be more reasonable for my health and my students' health? Perhaps hazard pay should be tied to the number of students in the classroom. Teachers, parents, and staff have many important concerns and questions that have not been fully answered. Until there are satisfactory answers to all of these questions, we should not be thinking of returning to brick-and-mortar schools. Educating children is a group effort, and all of those involved need to make, need to know that their health is protected. You will not be in the classroom with teachers and students. You will not be driving kids on the bus, or supervising them in the cafeteria, or in the hallway. You will not be cleaning up the classrooms. So it is your role to protect those who are.
Thirty seconds.
Education losses can be made up, but not if students and teachers are dead. We know it takes a village to raise a child, so it is up to this board to make sure the villagers are not killed. Thank you.
Thank you. Does stand a public, public comment, Chair?
Alright, thank you, Vice Chair. Yeah, one other, well, that, that ends the public comment.
Speaker cards are due by the start of the meeting. I apologize.
I want to thank those who took the time to, uh, express their concerns about the plan. We don't take it lightly. This board is doing the best they can to come up with a plan that meets the needs of this community. And that includes those who want their kids back in school and those who don't. So, uh, we have a difficult task. Uh, we were assigned that task, and we will do the best we can in developing a plan that addresses the needs of our community. Um, approval of the July sixteenth, twenty twenty agenda. That the Duval County School Board approved the July sixteen, twenty twenty agenda as submitted on July the fourteenth, twenty twenty with the following changes. Items to be discussed: emergency item, resolution requesting a waiver of emergency drills during COVID nineteen. Item added. I ask for a motion.
So move.
Motion by Board Member Hershey, second by Vice Chair Anderson. Any discussion? If not, I call for your vote. Thought you actually approved that item seven to zero. Items to be discussed: approval of school reopening plan, instructional delivery options. That the Duval County School Board of Duval County, Florida, approved the instructional delivery models included in the attached twenty, twenty twenty-one school reopening plan. I ask for a motion.
Of the item?
Second.
Motion by Board Member Her-, uh, Asher Smith Juarez, second by Board Member Hershey. Discussion, Dr. Green?
Yes, Chairman Jones, I'm gonna request that during discussion, you heard a lot about delaying the start of school, which this plan is based on us opening up school on August tenth. I'm going to request that the board have a conversation about the possibility of delaying, so that if that is the case, and then that is the desire of the board, then I will have to withdraw my recommendation, because this plan is based on opening up for August tenth.
Thank you. Uh, Board Member Hershey?
I, like I'm sure other board members, I'm assuming have talked to other board members across the county and state. Um, I had the opportunity to, uh, speak with the Chair of the St. Johns County School Board last night, um, and we were talking about delay. And we have to remember that if we delay, then it's added on at the end. Probably, I mean, it would impact June most likely. It, it might extend the, you know, the end of the school year. Uh, so we have to remember at the end of June, when we're getting out later, that we wanted to start later in August. And, but having said that, one of the things that, uh, the Chair of St. Johns County shared with me that I liked, uh, was they delayed for two weeks, but during that time, they were providing professional development, uh, for teachers, uh, for online instruction. Uh, that is something that I could support. Um, I don't know if that would come in the form of a recommendation, or a motion, or amendment, or whatever, but I would just like to put that out there. Um, I, I think that it, it does make sense to allow, um, time, uh, to, uh, help train teachers. We just pivoted really fast in the spring. And you just jumped in with both feet, right, you, you know, and, and you landed. Um, and, and sometimes the free-falling was, you know, scary for some. Uh, but having said that, um, I think it does make sense, looking at, um, what the landscape of education may be like for the upcoming school year. There is probably a good chance that, um, and teachers who are even involved in, uh, brick-and-mortar learning, uh, maybe, uh, maybe their school or their classroom would have to, uh, go to virtual. So I would support a delay with the district providing, um, professional development for teachers on, um, online instruction.
Thank you. I would, uh, please, we're, we're being patient. We ask to refrain from applause or demonstrations. Thank you. Uh, I will note that if we delay it for two weeks, that means August the twenty-fourth, which means the next day is the Republican National Convention. So we might want to look at three weeks as opposed to two weeks.
I would be open to whatever the board, I'm just, I, I, when I, the reason I show is when I talked to the Chair of the S- uh, St. Johns County School Board, was they didn't want to delay just to delay. But I like the delay with a purpose. Um, and that is something I could support, a delay with focused professional development for teachers, specifically with online instruction.
Board Member Asher Smith Juarez?
Thank you. Um, I, I, I want to open my comments by saying, um, as, as several speakers noted. And as we all know, this is unprecedented territory. These are uncharted waters, and they are rough and deep. Please, to the public, um, to teachers, to families, to those concerned, please do not presume that this is not as emotional for us as it is for you. Um, we are tasked with very, very difficult decision-making and lots of competing safety concerns. And so I just, I think it's important that as you ask us to recognize your humanity, I'm asking you to recognize ours as well. Um, and, and that as we engage in dialogue as a board with our constituents, with our community, that we remember to respond to each other as humans. And that we each sit in different seats. We each different, have different responsibilities. We each different, have different homes. Um, and we all have people in this community that we care deeply about. Um, so I just don't want that to go undernoticed, um, and especially to our superintendent, who has never shown it, but I am certainly sure has had sleepless nights, has, um, had her moments where she needs to call her people just to check in, just to have a moment, um, to vent and to be human. And I really, really deeply appreciate her leadership in this time. Um, that being said, I also appreciate her willingness to consider, uh, board direction to reconsider the plan. Um, so I do have a couple of questions. Um, one, the, the media has, uh, maybe I won't use the word widely, but it has been reported in the media more than once that the school district is asking teachers and school staff to sign a waiver of liability for infection for COVID nineteen. Is that the intention of the school district?
Through the Chair, through, through the Chair to Board Member, um, Smith Juarez, that is not, that is not for Duval. No, we are not asking that.
Thank you. I just, I think it's, it's important to have that point of clarity as we have the discussion. Um, through the Chair to the superintendent, uh, could you talk, just globally, I'm not asking you to go district by district, uh, but you, could you talk a bit globally about, um, other districts and their decisions? As we have heard, many are delaying. I won't say many. There are those who are delaying the start of school. Uh, what are the rationales that have been given for those delays?
Through the Chair to Board Member Smith Juarez, the districts that are considered delaying, um, are related to a variety of issues, such as St. John's, they're providing professional development for online instruction. However, St. John's plan indicates that they are going face-to-face aft-, on August twenty-third. I meant twenty-fourth. Um, I, I have spoken to the superintendent. I know that there's some discussion about the week of the RNC. We just haven't come to a conclusion about that at this point. Um, but that's the, the, pretty much the, the number one consensus is about professional development. I think school districts across Florida recognize that there will come a time that we might have to close a classroom. We have to close a school. And they want all teachers prepared to do online instruction, and our program is Duval Home Room. And we would do the same thing, making sure all of our teachers are trained. Uh, because part of the requirement, whether, um, we agree about the five days a week with the executive order, there is a very specific piece that, um, FTE could be affected if we are not utilizing our distance learning, uh, program in a way that, one, we can take attendance, two, that we can prove that, yes, they were, uh, engaged in schooling during the, the normal hours of, of what would be happening in face-to-face brick-and-mortar. So, many districts, um, are delaying. There are only three districts that are starting off online, and it's because their county has moved back to phase one. So their entire county is, is moving back. And that those school districts, um, are, are in that phase, and so they are, they're moving back to online instruction. I believe there are three districts, Miami-Dade, Broward, and West Palm, West Palm Beach. Uh, based on the information that we received at the superintendent's, uh, conference yesterday, I would say probably a third of the school districts are moving their start date back.
Um, thank you for that. My, my understanding is that also there are some districts that are waiting on fulfillment, um, of PPE, or are waiting for other, um, sanitation or, or personal protective equipment. Is that-
Through the, through the Chair to Board Member Smith Juarez, that is true. Um, we were very fortunate that we started early getting our PPE, and, um, as far as facial coverings or face shields, we, we have our resources in place. What we want, uh, more time to do is, um, utilizing this new product for, uh, and I don't want to get deep into explaining this product, that the fact it eats, uh, bad bacteria, that, uh, we won't receive our shipment in probably until the first part of August, and to make sure we cover a hundred and fifty-seven schools and every classroom with, uh, ensuring that the, every school, classroom and school has been, uh, addressed. Delaying would be helpful to the school district to get that done. And, um, I know that Mr. Suarez is, is working very diligently to, to ensure that, um, whatever we can have in place, that we have it in place prior to school starting.
Thank you. And, and Mr. Suarez and his team, as with all of our staff who's helped with these preparations, deserve huge thanks. Um, just a couple more quick things, and then I'll make a comment. Um, could you, through the Chair to Superintendent, could you speak to, um, the delay of schools and the impact on our payroll? Um, and the difficult, well, I, I won't editorialize. I'll just ask, could you speak to the impact of delaying the start of school on payroll and employment?
Through the Chair to Board Member Smith Juarez, um, this will require us to be out-of-the-box thinkers to ensure that we can maintain our current payroll, uh, sort of timeline. Teachers, when, if we started August tenth, they would have come back August third. They would have gotten a paycheck probably a week after school started. And if we delay it to the twenty-fourth, we believe we've worked out a way to continue to pay our teachers, not just teachers, but paraprofessionals, all of the, uh, employee groups that would be starting when school starts. That, that would not be disruptive. Anything after the twenty-fourth will become quite challenging. To, one, ensure how are we getting that time back? Uh, two, um, at, looking at the calendar, everything can't be pushed to the end of the year. So our goal is to work throughout the year where we can make up the time, but at the same time, not try to push that calendar too far in the month of June.
Okay, and, um, lastly, uh, has the state made any adjustments to, um, the expectations for high-stakes testing or the testing window this year? For the, well, excuse me, for the spring?
Through the Chair to Board Member Smith Juarez, no, um, that has not happened. Uh, I know, I'm sure there will be continued conversation with the Department of Education with the concern of still FSA, high-stakes testing. Again, we do not know how often we would have to close down and say, we're gonna go on a fourteen-day Duval Home Room. Uh, we don't know whether that would be one school, or we get to a point that, oh, all the schools are going to, uh, go to Duval Home Room as we did in the spring. And with those unknowns, it has been expressed that we, school districts are concerned, um, about FSA and utilizing that as, uh, an accountability tool. And though we have great confidence in, in our, in our teachers and our educators, we, we also know that for many of our students, this is, that's a challenging way to learn for them. We know that some of them will do just fine- We know that some of them will do just fine, but we will have others that will struggle. That, I think it was mentioned by one of the speakers, that they're in homes, that they have other environmental things that they are struggling with. And to be home doing online instruction will just asaspirate those issues.
Thank you. So a couple of things. I have been in touch with the Johns Hopkins School of Medicine and have read a publication and had some conversation about the possibility of returning to school. And lots of people may have been referencing their website and other information that they've been putting out regarding the pandemic. They do believe that there is a way to safely return to school during the pandemic. And there are a number of recommendations that they have. The vast majority of those that we have the resources and the capacity to incorporate, we have. We've talked quite a bit about our, the capacity of our nursing staff and nursing techs and who might take temperatures and place children or staff in isolation and those types of things were we to return to school. The big contingent factor at Hopkins is that case counts below in community. We don't have that. So no matter what we do as a school district right now, I don't think we have a community environment that promotes our return to brick-and-mortar. I say that with a very heavy heart because I know some of the other social determinant factors that children are struggling with, not having the school environment. I know Ms. Joyce has raised some of the concerns about the new data that we have under the Youth Risk Behavior Survey and how that might be affected. We know that abuse reports, as Ms. Miller mentioned, are decreased when children are not in school. So it's hard. But that being said, with the case counts the way that they are, I think we've done everything that we can to provide a safer environment. But we just don't have the community control that we need to invite people back into our buildings. I look forward to that happening. I think it's something that we will monitor daily and weekly. And I also, as I think about the delay in the start of school, have concern for doing that right now. I think we have a mechanism and we have a tool to begin some type of structure for our students. Many of them, most of them, I understand that Duval Home Room is not ideal. The pandemic environment is not ideal. So we are doing the best that we can in these very rough, very deep waters. So I would like to see us begin school on August 10th to give children and families some structure with Duval Home Room that our teachers did a tremendous job with. I'm certain more professional development could always be helpful. Our teachers who have been in the classroom for decades still benefit from thinking about what are new and innovative ways to instruct their children and connect with their children socially and emotionally. And I think that's going to be a really key component to how we do this. And I appreciate that there have been some measures and some thoughtfulness about how there can be individual and small-group contacts with kids. But I would really advocate that we go back to Duval Home Room on August 10th. I think it is, I'll use the word optimistic, to think that the weeks of August 10th to August 24th will be the only weeks that we might need to close school this fall, simply because of this dance, as it's been called, of closing and reopening and closing and reopening, as we've already seen. So I would ask my fellow board members to consider returning to school on the 10th with 100% Duval Home Room and with the option of any Duval County staff who can perform the duties of their job at home or in the protective environment of their choice, not be required to come into a communal environment. I think that's how we get the case count numbers down so that we can return to school, which is the ultimate goal, is to return to school and to return to school in the safest environment possible. Now Johns Hopkins will also tell you, case counts are not likely to be zero for a long time. But they need to be down. And so I'll leave my comments there and hope that the board will consider the possibility of Duval Home Room. And if we do need to consider some direction regarding the environment for employees to perform their duties, I can speak to Board Policy 6.47, but I'll hold that for later discussion. Thank you, Chairman.
All right, thank you. Very thoughtful. So we've heard two scenarios. One is delaying school opening for two weeks with professional development. And one is 100% Duval Home Room. Did you say for how long or what was?
Until case counts are at a manageable level to return to school. I won't say zero. I don't think medical professionals are saying zero. But I think they need to be lower, and they need to be declining.
I think the Health Department probably can give us a number.
That's right.
There's a certain percentage you can reach to, get to, where you can implement contact tracing effectively. You can't do it with the numbers we have now. So maybe we would defer to the Health Department at what point that would happen.
Always to, yes, a medical professional. Thank you.
All right. Any more suggestions, comments? I know Board Member Willie is on the line. I can't see your hand. Do you have any comments?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm glad we're having this conversation. I mean, we entered into this because we wanted to hear the different opinions and thoughts and make sure ultimately that our students are safe. There's a reason why I'm not in that building and in that room right now. Like, I have a family that I, people care about as many others would do, going back and forth with someone who is pregnant. So I want to make sure that I'm being as safe as possible. And I'm sure some of our teachers and families have those same concerns that they're entering into making these decisions for their young people or making decisions for themselves as educators. So I'm in the position of having the conversation definitely about delaying and delaying with action, as Board Member Hershey said, training up our teachers and making sure they're good to go and ready to go. But also, this is going to be an education for our city. Board Member Smith-Horres mentioned, this is not just about the kids going back. This is about our city understanding that if we don't do what's necessary right now within these weeks leading up to August 10th or August 24th, like, it's all for naught. Like, if we go out right now and just do things the way we're doing them, no math in some cases, and not understanding, like, the ramifications of that when school opens up, we're going to be in a very difficult spot. So I could see a delay, a delay with education for our teachers, professional development, but also education and marketing for our community to say, hey, we're masks for our kids. Because the more cases we have that we enter into opening up schools, the more quickly we're going to have to shut them right back down. So I'm open to this dialogue. I would love to hear about the feasibility. We've heard about the feasibility of the delay. Haven't quite heard about the feasibility of moving directly and only to Duval Home Room, without the open to hear about that, too. So those are my comments for now. I'm sure I'll have more later. But I'm glad we're moving down this path. I'm glad we have a good plan, though, as well, because this is something for us to react to and sort of bounce back and forth.
All right. Thank you, Board Member Willie. Ms. Joyce, Vice Chair Anderson?
What was he asking for the superintendent to respond?
I don't think, did you ask, Board Member Willie, did you ask the superintendent a question? If so, I missed it.
I think I did mention about the feasibility of the starting Duval, everyone Duval Home Room slash DVIA on August 10th. Is that, do we have the feasibility to do that if we started right now to do that? Or would we have to delay to do that? What are the possibility or feasibility of that?
Through the chair to Board Member Willie, to just be honest, it would be very challenging. We have thousands of students who are entering our schools for the first time, whether that's kindergarten or they're new to our district. We would have to figure out how would we get devices to those students. In the spring, we were surviving to get through the year. And we did not administer devices to every single student. We had students participating through work packets. That is not an option for this upcoming year. It's not work packets. It is, they are all bought in into Duval Home Room. That would be very challenging to say that we could do that on August 10th.
Okay. Thank you. Vice Chair Anderson?
Thank you, Chair Jones. So I appreciate Board Member Smith-Horres asking for some consideration of this undertaking for board members. I have struggled to sleep myself, and I have had lots and lots of things to think about. And I've been writing, and I've got a lot on my mind. But I'll try to not get so passionate that it seems like I'm yelling at anyone and try to be brief, which we know can be a challenge. So I apologize in advance.
You want to set the clock?
Set the clock for me. So we're talking about a couple of different things here that I think are really important for us to talk about. One would be the delay of opening and then opening all online. In the context of the vote that we have before us today, I feel a little confused. So what we're being asked to vote on is the, and I'll have the agenda item in front of me, but is the plan that's being presented to the Department of Education, correct?
Through the chair to Vice Chair Anderson, are you asking, are you voting on the plan? What you're voting on is the approval of the instructional delivery models. That's what you're voting on, not the plan itself. So our instructional delivery models in this plan stated that school would start August 10th and that elementary would be five days a week, middle school hybrid, high school hybrid. Families would have the opportunity to choose to do distance learning, which would be Duval Home Room, or they could choose the district's virtual school, which is DVIA.
Okay. So in the context of the vote we have to make, maybe through the chair to Ms. Chastain, can the board amend the plan that's been presented by the superintendent?
Through the chair to Vice Chairman Anderson, yes, it's an agenda item. So once a recommendation is submitted to you, it can be approved, rejected, amended. It's for you to make a decision.
Thank you. So I'd like to start on page three of the plan that we received, which I printed and brought with me. I apologize if the other board members don't have it. But there's a couple of sentences that I'd like to point out. So in the third paragraph, it says here, "In addition, the plan provides an option to pivot to full-time distance learning should our local COVID-19 numbers warrant such a closure at the advice of our local health department, either at the school or district level." That's really the only place that I see a sentence like that. Is it your intention with the sentence here that that would apply at any given time? And what would be sort of the triggers for reassessing our local COVID-19 numbers that might warrant such a closure?
Through the chair to Vice Chair Anderson, yes, the sentence is there that gives us the freedom to pivot if we need to, to full-time Duval Home Room. We are working with the Department of Health to make that more detailed. If you go to the website, it indicates that based on a positive case, after contact tracing, we could close a classroom. And that classroom would be closed for 14 days. Or there's a number of cases at a particular school, we have the ability to say, "We're closing that school for 14 days," and all students would transfer to Duval Home Room. Or any other situation, we might close multiple schools. We put that in there so that we had that flexibility.
I appreciate that. This is one of the big concerns that I had in general with the plan is that, A, all of the decisions that we're making should be based and rooted in health data for our local community and made in collaboration with the public health officials in our area. And so with that being said, as we have a conversation about the possibility of exercising the item that's, you know, the sentence here that's been left for our discretion, my computer's going to shut down, is this something that we can ask our local health department to provide more detailed response on? Guidance, if you will?
Through the chair to Vice Chair Anderson, Department of Health has made it clear that they will provide guidance. And we have followed their guidance. And that is what they have indicated that they will do. That is the reason why we've consulted with Wilson Children's Hospital, UF Health, the Medical Society. That's why we've consulted with a number of other entities to help us make the decision whether we are going to delay the school opening or someone feels that we should move to Duval Home Room. The concern, again, that we will express is that based on everything we've been told, we're still in the first wave. So we need to be prepared if the second wave comes whenever, in November, and we need to be able to pivot. And again, the purpose of submitting this plan was the requirement that anything outside of the executive order still has to be approved by the Department of Education. And that it still does not guarantee that they will approve it, nor does it guarantee that they will protect or hold our FTE harmless.
Can you explain that in a little bit more detail? I just want to make sure that I'm clear and that others are clear.
Through the chair to Vice Chair Anderson, I know that there may be legal action. I'm not getting into that with the Department of Education, but they do still hold the purse strings. They can determine that based on your plan, you can move forward, but we're going to indicate that it doesn't meet our threshold and they could, it could impact our funding come October, Survey 2. And we, at this point, just don't know how that will be done. We don't know what that actually means when you say it can impact our funding. And the plan submitted actually did not require a school board approval. I chose to bring it for school board approval. And therefore, the recommendation is based on what we're asking the board to approve.
And so if the board does not approve the agenda item today, then what happens?
If the board, well, based on what I said at the very beginning, if the board indicates that they want us to go back and bring back a new calendar that shows a delay, then this is negated anyway. I would still have to bring back another plan if I'm bringing it back for board approval. So that's why I asked the board to have that discussion because if that leans to, yes, we want to delay, then I'm going to withdraw my recommendation because I, this does not meet, it wouldn't be aligned with the recommendation to delay the opening.
Sure. I mean, my thought process is that perhaps we could make an amendment to this document to make a global change to the date, in which case we could move forward with a vote on the amendment and then on the item itself so that we could go, we could continue forward. And I think that Ms. Chastain confirmed that that's an option, you know, that the board has, having this in front of us to consider today. So with all of that being said, I think- So with all of that being said, I think similar to Board Member Smith-Warez and Board Member Willie, my primary concerns are reach beyond our school walls. I, I feel that I can say with some certainty really that the plan that you've given us here is very thoughtful. It has, let me make sure I have my notes here. It has left no stone unturned. You're really looking at all of the ways that we can mitigate virus transmission inside of our buildings for our students and staff. Do I think that there are some other pieces of the puzzle that certainly could be worked on that aren't necessarily in these pages here? Yes, and I may share my thoughts on those. But I, I want to sincerely say I appreciate the can-do attitude, the agility, the determination of the entire executive team and leadership in trying to pull this all together. At this point in time, I feel like the, having to pivot in such a fluid situation has left a lot of unknowns. Parents are scrambling, teachers are scrambling, I would imagine administrators are scrambling. There's, although, there's a lot to be done by August 10th. I think that being able to delay, to amend this document, to allow for a delay in the start of school would be beneficial all around. The second part of that, of course, would be whether or not then the, the start would be all online, virtual or, or not, in some hybrid model. And I think that that's where we really have to come back to the Department of Health. Every single guidance that has been published by all of the people that are experts ask the reopening plans to work in collaboration with our local health officials, all of them. They all say that. And so I think that there's time, it's time to press our local health officials to get more information about what community transmission is too much. I was looking at the numbers today, cases are at 831. 831 is what I see on the dashboard. That's the highest number I've seen ever. And so the White House guidance, if you go to whitehouse.gov and the CDC recommendations for phase reopening, their gating criteria is a 14-day decline, right? We haven't, we haven't seen that yet. And so I don't know that this particular time for our community is, is safe. And it goes beyond our buildings because when, when our community doesn't have the capacity to accommodate the health needs that are already presenting or moving forward and then we bring people back into our buildings and who knows? Who knows how many people will choose five-day-a-week options? How many people will choose Duval Home Room? How many people will choose DVIA? I think it's a gamble. And so if we create a situation where we overtax the system, then it's not just about our schools and about education or about economics or about politics. You know, it's about the health and safety of our community. And so that's where I, I am struggling. That's where I am losing sleep because I think it goes beyond all of those things. There, there are details that I won't belabor in this moment. I would simply say that I would like to move to amend the start date in this document. And then beyond that, I think we can, we can add checkpoints. Where we can say, okay, well, if we don't start until the 19th or we don't start until the 24th, then what is it going to look like then? That gives us a month to look and see, maybe we do have two weeks of declining data and we can move forward with the plan as proposed. Maybe we don't. But I think it gives us a little bit of time. We know that this virus changes very quickly. And so I think, given a conversation that you and I had had previously, given the conversation around the Republican National Convention that is set to come into the city August 24th to the 27th, that perhaps a date of August 19th, which would be the Wednesday prior, would give us an opportunity to, if we open with a brick-and-mortar setting, if that's a choice that we decide to move forward with, given the guidance of our local health department, we would have a few days before the convention to make that decision. Is the 19th to the 24th a better date for you?
Through the Chair to Vice Chair Anderson, I, I do need to remind the Board that this is a negotiated item. And so we, I need, the, the real issue is you're telling us to delay. Then we would need to take this back to the Calendar Committee to determine the length of that delay. And that's why I stated if this is the will of the Board asking for a delay, then I need to withdraw my recommendation because that changes a lot, well, that changes the plan.
And also, the plan is due to the Department of Education?
June, July 30th. So we still have time to, to do what we need to do. I think next week you have another special board meeting.
Yes.
We have several special board meetings. I'll jump on one of those with bringing it back. That gives us time to have a conversation with our, with our union.
Ms. Chastain and then I'll let, I'll come back. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Through the Chair to the Board, maybe another option procedurally is without picking the date of when to defer, if that's the will of the Board, you would in effect reach the same place if there's a motion to defer this item to a time certain. You have several special meetings coming up. You have a special meeting next Tuesday starting at 1:00. I think that's July 21. And then you have two special meetings for your budget, starting at 5:05 PM, one on July 23rd and then another on July 28th. So I'm just offering this as another avenue if this is where you're headed. Another procedural avenue for you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Anderson, I just wanted you to hear.
No, I think that that, I think that's great. I just think we need to know how, how do we continue to move this forward? Obviously, there's, this is time-sensitive, right? The Department of Education wants it by the end of the month, so we need to be able to move on this quickly. And so unless there's further comment, maybe there's a motion.
Board Member Joyce. We're going to rotate who sits, who's in the outer lanes. Next time, it may be Hershey.
Ms. Hershey said she's in the mush pile.
I appreciate all the conversation. I appreciate the teachers coming out to express their passion and desire for their needs. Being a former teacher in the classroom, I completely understand it. I have had sleepless nights over this. And this is such, we are in such a tough spot to make this decision. But I think as we move forward, I completely support moving the start date, delaying the start of school. But I do think that we need to ask some questions and figure some things out before we move into what that plan looks like when we do go back to school. And I think that number one, we do need the information back from the Health Department so we can see the statistics of domestic violence and child abuse and suicide rate and all of the social issues that our students are dealing with. I think that's an important factor when we are deciding how we're going to move forward. I also think that we need to have some solid statistics from the Health Department about what the COVID-19 rates are doing and what that, what is going on in our community with hospitalizations and people who are sick and people who are asymptomatic. And we need all of those definitive numbers. But I also think that we need to look at how many teachers have signed up for Duval Home Room? How many parents have signed up for Duval, Duval Home Room? So I think we need to look at what is the demand here? We have teachers that obviously are, they don't, they don't feel comfortable going back in the classroom and we have teachers that are willing and able to go back into the classroom and they are excited to go back in the classroom. We have parents who don't want their children in school, but we have parents that do want their children in school. So I think that that information and that data needs to go in to the decisions that we're making. And then, you know, I don't know how flexible this plan is and I don't know what Dr. Green will bring back to the Board. Sounds to me like she doesn't really have to bring anything back because ultimately the decision rests on what she feels is best for the school district. But I do think that students, I will just say, I am a little uncomfortable with students being in Duval Home Room with random other students, with a teacher, and then if they decide they're going to move back into the brick-and-mortar setting in October or November, that they have another teacher at that time. I would like to see more continuity in the plan as far as teachers assigned to students and students assigned to teachers and moving that flexibility if we have to go virtual learning altogether again or we don't. I don't know if that's possible and I will completely trust the Superintendent to make those decisions. But in the process of delaying, in the process of making sure that we have looked at all the data, that we are making wise decisions, I do really feel like we need to think about allowing students to be with a teacher, whether virtually or in person, and keeping that same teacher or same teachers throughout the year. And again, I understand that could be very challenging, but I do feel like that would be best for our teachers and that would be best for our students.
Thank you. I would just add that we do have a difficult decision. And I think there seems to be a consensus on a two-week delay, Dr. Green, from what I'm hearing from the Board members, that we reviewed it. Ma'am?
I think I heard up to two weeks. Because I heard 19, 24, up to. Again, the calendar, it's a bargaining issue. The Calendar Committee would need to come together, so. I heard consensus.
Up to two weeks and that's in Board policy, so the Calendar Committee could revisit that. And also, they use that time for professional development. And also make sure in that professional development on how to teach remotely, we should also include how to protect, how we have the PPE for the teachers, the gloves, the masks, the shields, so they understand how to properly use that. And, and, and also maybe they're using Duval Home Room for all students up until, what is it, September 8th? Which is, which gets us through this period of time and perhaps can give us time to see a decline. I don't know if we'll have information on the, on the number of parents who, the parents have until what date to decide if they're going to do Duval Home Room or Brick and Mortar.
Through the Chair to the Chair, July 24th. I believe this morning, not this morning, this afternoon, you received an email that kind of is giving you the update of where we are today. I think we're close to, by this afternoon, we'll be over 5,000 families have chosen to participate in Duval Home Room. And just to address the issue, the concern for School Board Member Ms. Joyce, the issue is that 5,000 sounds like a lot, but we are serving over 110,000. And that will be very challenging to say, I can have the teacher at your school be your Duval Home Room and then when you return in Brick and Mortar, that's the same teacher. That's going to be, that would be very challenging. If you look at the data, I have some schools that have zero. No one's chosen to sign up for Duval Home Room. And then I have other schools that even though it says 150, their total population is over 2,000. So that's the challenge that we will be facing with implementing Duval Home Room. And it, it will, unless we get more and more families to sign up for Duval Home Room, it, it would be virtually impossible to, to guarantee the teacher that you had on Duval Home Room would be the teacher that would serve you when you, if you chose to come back to Brick and Mortar. Because they can come back at any time. We encourage them to stay the entire quarter, but we're not going to stop them from, you know, if they want to come back prior to that, we're not going to say, no, you can't. We would allow them back in their school.
Board Member Hershey and then Smith-Warez.
I know that, that I have been one to really push Duval Home Room because it allows students to be connected to their respective school and representing a district that is greatly impacted by charter schools. I know firsthand the pain when a school loses students to another school. Those are dollars and that impacts staff at that school. So one thing I like about Duval Home Room that Dr. Green has proposed is that it allows students to engage in online learning, yet be connected to their respective school so that they can return to it. And then that helps that school retain that student. And it's one of those things, it's kind of like contract negotiation, somewhere it's got to be a win-win. And we can't make everybody happy. And I get it and I understand the idea that you're with the same person, but I think being connected to your school and that school retaining the student in that seat is, is really important. I, I don't know if other districts have experienced it, but just wait because it hurts. When you, you can lose five or six students and it can have an impact on your population.
Can I just follow up? As a mom with a incoming 10th grader, that was, that is the reason why I'm not choosing Duval Home Room, is because I want some continuity with his teachers. I want him to have the same teachers at the beginning of the year, then in the middle of the year. I mean, if he decides to move back into Brick and Mortar. And that's just my opinion as a mom. So I feel like there are other parents in the district that are not choosing Duval Home Room because of that same situation. And so just making sure that we understand, there's not a lot of parents who have signed up for Duval Home Room and maybe that is a reason, that's why my student's not going to Duval.
You know, I think, which is hard with being a Board Member, we represent the entire district and not just our, our own district or our own perception. You know, I know students who want to get back to school and maybe their parents want them to, to stay home. So those, I felt we've given people options. And we're not going to get Duval Home Room, maybe like everybody wants it. But I think it is so important that we have Duval Home Room, which allows students to be connected to their neighborhood school and to remain in relationship. Because time and time again, what you hear about teaching is it's the relationship. And when I visited schools, when we were doing the lunches, people showed up for their lunches because they're, and they were happy to see the principal out there or their teacher. And it was going to the school, there was something about going back to that building and the cars would line up. It was really exciting. And so I think that that's what Duval Home Room does. Maybe it's not the direct teacher, but it's the connection to a community, to a place that they're already familiar with. And I think that that's a, that's a really big benefit. I, I won't go on there. I would support a delay with a purpose. And to include a professional development because I think that it's very clear that online learning is not going to go away. And to have some development to help teachers who may have struggled in the spring would be beneficial.
Thank you. Board Members, Asher Smith-Warez.
Thank you. Like Ms. Anderson, I'll try to be brief, but I'll likely fail. I, I just, I, I hear that I'm likely outvoted and that happens. And, and I appreciate the discernment of the Board and I appreciate that there are, you know, a variety of factors that everyone is weighing and a variety of opinions. I just want to emphasize, as we think about delaying the start date, that compressing the calendar now gives us much less flexibility as the year moves forward. So we, listen, if, if last year was a year of surprises, I think this year is a year of compromises, right? We know that Duval Home Room is not going to be perfect for every student. We know that there are teachers. We know that there are teachers who are continuing to learn up on how to deliver online education. Um, we know that um, we have children every year when we are experiencing, you know, a typical start, who don't come to school until after Labor Day, who um, don't have the materials that they need or who move schools frequently. Um, that, that, uh, you know, sometimes online learning doesn't warrant like in-person learning. So although it may be a Herculean task to get every student online by August tenth, given um, that we do have a number of new students who come into the district every year, I would really, really, really like to see us try. Because of compressing the content, the calendar now, we'll have less flexibility moving forward. We'll have less days to negotiate with moving forward. And the state has not made any indication that they are going to change or amend either the required testing or the testing window. And so I worry, we already test kids, really two-thirds, maybe three-quarters through the year. And so if we take two more weeks away from the preparation that students will have from tests that have not been waived, I have concern about that. Um, we already ask our teachers to do incredible work to get them ready for those tests as it is. Um, I'll save my speech about how I think maybe there'd be one uh, positive outcome of COVID, that we get rid of those altogether. Um, but it, so I, I'll say those, those two things and, and then I'll just close by saying, I want children in school. I know that there are a lot of parents who want children in school. I think children need um, that environment, there are a lot of positives to them being there. And um, other board members have said it, I will emphasize it, to provide the safest environment that we can, which we do every year. Um, we, you know, we, we do our best to be the safest environment we can all the time, but we've heard already today. Um, and, and many of us as board members have experienced um, places where we are concerned that we may fall short. We have shown up to school buildings when there is a threat of violence. Um, or when there has been violence at one of our schools, we have shown up to schools when there is an outbreak um, of some other um, vi- you know, bacteria or virus. We have shown up to schools um, when there is concern about um, the uh, social and emotional needs of children in a school due to uh, bullying or, or other things. Um, so uh, when we get that safer environment and the safest environment that we can provide, I, I want to see children go back. But I think our best bet is to send them back to Duval homeroom on August the tenth, so that we maintain flexibility moving forward. We give students the best learning delivery model that we have um, given the rising case counts and the, the level of case counts in uh, the, the rate of, of uh, infection in the county. We also give our teachers and our students the best chance to learn and perform on those tests that they, as of now, have coming in the spring. So, I, I will um, leave it there, but I, I think the superintendent has offered to withdraw the item um, to hear the board's uh, discernment and debate and to uh, bring back a revised item at a future date. So to Ms. Anderson's point, I, I'm not certain that we need to debate the amendment or, or any type of amendment today. I think we could take the superintendent up on her offer to, to withdraw the item. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Chastain, you have it.
Good a- good afternoon, uh, through the chair and to the board. I, I don't recall if Ms. Anderson's amendment was seconded, if it wasn't, then it's not really on the floor. Um, and I don't know that this can be quote withdrawn because the board, it's with the board now. So procedurally, I recommend that somebody make a motion to postpone this to a time certain at one of your special meetings um, already scheduled. I think the dates were July twenty-one, twenty-third and twenty-eighth. And that, if that motion's made, it needs a second and, and it needs a majority vote.
Okay, now, you said postpone, if, if the plan is changed, would that change the motion?
Um, through, through the, to the chair, um, yes, you can substitute the motion at that time. I'm just trying to figure out how to dispose of.
Postpone until it's time certain, then we can substitute the current plan with the new plan.
Correct, or you could postpone it indefinitely, which um, kills it and, but then doesn't preclude bringing another one back.
Dr. Green?
Um, through the chair, the twenty-third would be the best, the twenty-first, that's Tuesday. That really doesn't give us a whole lot of time. So if, if, if Ms. Chastain, if it's okay that we ask them to make it date certain July twenty-third, would that be okay?
Uh, through, through the chair, the superintendent, I'm offering procedurally for the board what to do. If, if someone makes that motion, I think you've given your recommendation as to a feasible time.
Thank you. Ms. Hershey?
Uh, can I ask a question?
Board member Willie, and then we come back to board member Hershey. Uh, and then Anderson.
Yeah, through the, through the chair, I'm just wondering um, if we do postpone or push this, this item. I'm wondering what sort of procedural things that are in place right now that we can continue to do uh, based on what's already been sort of put out to the public about the plan that we can use to collect data and information uh, to so many of the board members' points, choices for parents, go choices for teachers, to sort of collect that data, have a better understanding of where we are. Can we continue to do that um, while um, sort of looking at a different um, start date?
Through the chair to board member Willie, I, I think what I heard is, are we gonna continue? Duval homeroom registration will continue. That, that is po- uh, sort of a requirement that we need to put in place. And we will continue to work through the issue of which teachers would be engaged with Duval homeroom.
That's a question.
I'm, I'm hoping I'm answering your question.
There you are, that's all I'm asking. I think that helps us to be able to collect that information to, to, to help sort of inform and make decisions. And then even on the teacher side, I think that helps a lot, just to be able to inform that. Uh, I mean honestly, the delay, I'm even thinking about not only just training of teachers, but if we need to hire additional staff and teachers, because that gives HR more time to be able to do some of that, so I'm just trying to think about all the different pieces there, to figure out what to lay and what we can sort of use as our advantage.
Thank you. Uh, board member Hershey?
Um, I hope I didn't forget my question. Yeah, that was right there. Um, I, I know what it was. I, my question um, through the chair to the superintendent is um, I, I've, it's kind of a statement and a question. Because I've talked to so many people in community and responded to so many emails and I know other people have responded to emails, I, I'm just wondering when we delay um, a start date, if parents don't begin to get frustrated cause I think we're, everything's so uncertain and people want a date and so we, we keep going up. And so I think we need to be able to say, by this date, we're gonna know that this is the s- the start date and everything, cause I think people are gearing up. I've been around some, some single working moms recently and um, they're like ready to go out and buy school supplies, cause it's just a few weeks out. And so I know COVID has been a roller coaster ride for all of us, but I think we have to be very careful and we need to be very cognizant of the community as well to have this start-stop, you know, roller coaster thing. I need, I think we need to be able to um, um, make a decision about a start date and make a decision about what it looks like when we start um, and get that going. That's my only thing, my, it's not really a question to the superintendent, it's more of a statement. My concern for the community is um, they're looking from, for some certainty and I don't want to delay for too long um, any questions and uncertainty of are my kids gonna go back to school and this helps me as a single parent, uh, kinds of questions.
That, that's a very good point, I've heard that too and, and, and therein lies my concern. And I kinda agree with board member Smith-Warres that I think the start date probably should remain August the tenth. Then the question becomes whether it's virtual or whether it's a combination of both. But I do think we need to stay with the start date of August the tenth. Cause there are a lot of questions and people are, are wondering, when are you gonna start? Well, we haven't even, you know, with discussion today, I think we've added some confusion to when we start. And, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna add any more confusion to uh, the community conversation that's going on right now. Uh, I think you can.
Yes, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so now hearing these, hearing these pieces, I have a little bit of a different thought process that I'll go with um, to start here. Um, I think that if what we're asking the superintendent to do is to start school on August tenth virtually, that's a lot. I mean, that's, that's a lot of bits um, and pieces that we would definitely need to get put into place. I mean, simply we could say, well, it would be just like we left off last um, last summer, right, or la- last spring, we could just keep going. Um, but to the point that she made before, we've got new students coming into our buildings and so I, I, I'm concerned that if we, if we asked for a virtual start date on August tenth, that that would be very challenging to get all those pieces in place. So whether we start virtually or whether we start with the plan that's proposed here, um, and what I've come to be familiar, my mind is like a yellow phase, um, not a red phase. Which is a whole other, whole other thing that I didn't even talk about today. Um, then, you know, I, I do think that still some sort of delay would be important. I think that's gonna get us an opportunity to be able to have a conversation with the Department of Health, to be able to put some of these thresholds in place, to be able to talk with our city leaders and, and watch the data, um, to make sure that we're making data-driven decisions, as we're educators, right? How we make data-driven decisions, we rely on um, real science, um, and, and health data from professionals, which I am not. And I, I mean, we are, we are here to help run an educational school system. Um, but I, I do need the Department of Health, I need these local health officials to work with us in this way and I know that they've been so supportive of you, but these specific things like thresholds and when we should close and how to make those decisions, um, I, I think their input's really important. And I'm very concerned that um, the story broke yesterday out of Palm Beach that the local health officials are being silenced by the surgeon general and they're being told not to help local school districts. Um, that's very concerning to me. And so um, you know, if we're in a position where that, that is um, the guidance that's being given, then we have nothing but our own um, ability, our own guesses, I mean, to be able to make these very important, weighty decisions for the good of our whole community. Again, not just for our school system, but if this, if this tips, then we've got a real risky problem for Duval County. Um, and so with that being said, I think that um, to board member Joyce's point about wanting to have that same teacher in Duval homeroom, um, and I think about opening our school buildings and being in brick and mortar five days a week and how, um, how quickly or how often will we have to quarantine? How often, how quickly will children have to get another teacher on Duval homeroom because theirs is out sick? Um, you know, or we have to divide those students up? I mean, the, that's the reality of it, right? There is no, there's, I don't know how we're gonna be able to guarantee a teacher all year long, especially if we're talking about going back into a brick and mortar building five days a week. I, I just, it doesn't, I don't think that that's even a place where we can consider um, giving a parent that assurance. Uh, I think the parents have a lot of questions and they're being asked to make this decision by the twenty-fourth. And so for that reason, I, I think we need to decide what we're asking of the superintendent. Are we asking her to change a date or are we asking her to change the plan? Because I think if we can come back on the twenty-first, on Tuesday with a date change, um, then that's, tha- that gives parents a little bit more time to make some decision. Uh, it gives teachers a little bit more time to make some decision. Um, and certainly would give your staff and leadership more, more time to get in place what they need to get in place.
Uh, board member Joyce?
I appreciate this comment, um, Vice Chair Anderson, and that you make very good and valid points and, and I, I take them um, with the utmost respect. Um, but I do, and, and with, to board member Hershey's point of having parents have a start date and a definite date, I understand that as well as a parent. I know we like to plan and we like to know what's gonna go, what's gonna happen. But the reality is, we haven't been certain about anything since March. And with the numbers that, the way they are now, we can be sure that we're not gonna be certain about anything until maybe we get a vaccine. So we have to make sure that we're being flexible. A parent can totally be in a situation where they think their child is gonna start to, you know, start back to school on the twenty-fourth and then, you know, they go to school for two days, somebody can't, you know, gets COVID and now we're all out for fourteen days. So you have to have some flexibility in the era of the pandemic that we're in. Um, but I do think that it's vitally important that when we task the superintendent with making these decisions, that we have all of the data to make the right decisions. So we do need those um, social issue data, we need to know what the numbers are in the district. And I think adding a little more time makes it easier for us to support our community and to support the superintendent.
Just a, a real, just a real quick response if you don't mind, Chair. Um, I, I just wanna remind you that although we'll look at these suicide rates, we'll look at domestic violence rates, we'll look at abuse report, you know, we'll look at that data and I think that that's all valid data. I, as a mental health counselor, the anxiety that people are having that is not measured by the Department of Health is very real. And that is also a very pressing concern um, for children and for adults.
I agree.
Board member Hershey?
I think um, we're, Vice Chair Anderson um, kinda asked the question, so I was gonna answer it. You know, what are we asking the superintendent for? Um, I, I still think a delay that superintendent, I, I mentioned professional development. I don't know, um, I'm assuming people got emails that I got in the spring and had conversations with teachers um, similar to the conversations I had where there was a need for some teachers to have some professional development. There was a learning curve and, and we've, we've already, we spent a lot of time during this meeting uh, talking of it might be start-stop-change, online, non-online, brick and mortar. We need to train our teachers and give them time for professional development if we're going to do this and make it effective. Um, I, and the other thing is I heard Dr. Green mention um, that there is a deep cleaning that needs to take place in our schools. So um, while I could give a date of how long we should delay the start date, uh, what I would like to ask the superintendent is taking into consideration um, putting together professional development for online instruction for teachers that is very effective as well as doing a good deep cleaning to all of our schools. Uh, could you give us a date that you would recommend that we could start based upon that? That would be my, that would be my ask of the superintendent. Um, and then we could go from there.
Okay, why don't we take, somebody wanna offer a motion to uh, postpone this until the twenty-third of July, I think I heard. And uh, the superintendent can come back with uh, any recommended changes, modifications to the plan.
I'll motion for a postponement.
Second.
Motion back.
July twenty-third.
Time certain, board member Joyce po- offers a motion to postpone to the time certain, July the twenty-third. Second back, board member Hershey. Any, any more discussion?
I would prefer to see it on the twenty-first.
Okay, well we have.
It gives parents more opportunity to make decisions if we're just talking about a date change. Is that something that we can?
Dr. Green was the one who said the twenty-third.
You wanna offer a substitute motion then? Because we have a motion and a second on the floor. So you have to offer a substitute motion or wait to see what happens to this motion.
I'd like to offer a substitute motion um, for the twenty-first.
Set a second to that.
Move to substitute.
It dies for a lack of second. Dr. Green, you have it, come here. You have a motion and a second to postpone to a time certain, which is July the twenty-third. You have a motion and a second to postpone to a time certain, which is July the 23rd. Uh, call for your vote. Do we have anybody? Hello? The motion, do you need time to put it in? The motion is to, uh, postpone to a time certain, July the 23rd.
While, while she's putting that in, could I discuss the, uh, motion to postpone? Thank you. Um, through the, uh, chair to the superintendent, um, could you just recap what you think you have heard in terms of what we are asking? Um, be amended or, or, or be shifted, i- if that's possible. If you say, you know, you need a process, you need a process with staff, I get that. But I just, when, um, Vice Chair asked for the 21st and I heard you had, um, asked for the 23rd, I think there, there just may be some, eh, eh, some different understanding of how much and what we might be proposing to change.
The reason you, explain the reason you asked for the 23rd versus the 21st, I think.
Through the chair to Board Member Ms. Smith-Warres, the reason I asked for the 23rd is the, anything dealing with the calendar has to be sent to the Calendar Committee. That committee has to meet and we have to negotiate that with our union. And the fact that we are on a four-day week, tomorrow the district is pretty much closed, that only gives Monday and if Tuesday is the 21st, that really would be challenging. So that is why I requested July the 23rd. And depending on start date, it has the ability to impact the plan and we have to have time to make those adjustments. So that is why I'm recommending July the 23rd. That is why I'm requesting, sorry.
And whatever plan is ultimately approved by this board has to be approved by the Department of Education.
Through the chair, yes, that is correct, and it has a due date of July 30th.
And if the plan is not approved by the Department of Education, we have to come back and address those changes at that point, or how does that work?
Through, through the chair, um, I have a phone call later, uh, today or tomorrow and hopefully we'll get more information. We have not been told what does that mean if, if our plan is not approved. Um, again, the bottom line is that, um, we want an approved plan to ensure that our funding is not going to be impacted. It, it may be that they say you can go forward with your plan, but know that your funding will be impacted. So, it, it really just depends on the conversations that, um, I will continue to have with the Department of Education.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, uh, I call for your vote. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, um.
Dr., Miss Green?
Um, so you're?
There was no, her motion was to?
Not seconded.
It was not seconded, so we're on the motion to?
Twenty-third, twenty-third.
Yeah. Okay, the motion on the floor currently was properly moved and seconded is to postpone until, uh, July the 23rd, uh, time certain, July the 23rd. Call for your vote.
I'm sorry, Chair, who was your, who, who presented the motion to defer and who seconded?
Uh, Board Member Joyce presented it and it was seconded by Board Member Hershey. Uh, by your action, you approve the motion seven to zero. Thank you. Item six. Item six is a resolution requesting a waiver of emergency drills during COVID-19. This emergency item has been added in accordance with, with School Board Policy 2.26, based on the determination it will have a significant adverse effect on the welfare of Duval County Public Schools and requires a discussion and action by the board. Board Member Smith-Warres?
Move the item.
Motion. Motion by Board Member Smith-Warres, seconded by Board Member Anderson. Any discussion? Smith-Warres?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, I, I just do want to point out, um, that this particular, um, resolution I do think is still relevant, um, because it does, uh, speak to the pandemic generally. I also want to assure people that as we talk about this, and I don't, I'll, I'll pull it up quickly, but the, um, the request for a waiver is to request that, um, instructions for emergency procedures be delivered verbally and visually, but not kinesthetically. So that students not be, and, and teachers and anyone else in the building, not be required to move into small spaces during drills. Um, so this is not to eliminate drills, this is not to, um, you know, indicate in any way that we don't value that there is importance to students knowing what to do if there is a fire, if there, um, is a weather event. But it is simply that, um, that item two of, um, the resolved section reads, "In lieu of conducting emergency drills, the School Board will direct the superintendent to implement instructions for emergency procedures to be distributed to students and staff both visually and verbally." Thank you.
All right, thank you. Woman Hershey.
Thank you, uh, Board Member, um, Smith-Warres, because I, um, I looked at that and I was like, oh no, why are I called the superintendent? Why are we, you know, doing this to, and, because my concern is we don't want to let our guard down.
That's right.
And, and we, and, um, we get into a dangerous place, um, when we relax and we don't remain, um, uh, just diligent about, um, everything that's going on around us. So, um, I also understand that hard corners are a, a tight part of the room and you're very close together. Um, and it just seems to me that, um, under the current health conditions that we have, um, practicing those, uh, getting that close, um, but it does seem like a smart, a smart move, but I do appreciate the clarification because that was my big concern. I thought, oh no, we can't let our guard down. And that was, that was my concern when I, uh, obviously did not read it thoroughly, I read it quickly. I don't know if anybody else does that, but I read it and?
It was generated quickly. Thank you to Ms. Chastain.
So I appreciate that clarification because I had concern that we were letting our guard down and I did not want to, want us to do that, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you, I think is well done. And thank you, Ms. Chastain and Ms. Smith-Warres for that quick turnaround. I think, uh, it's, it's right on point. Uh, any other discussion? If not, I call for your vote. By your action, you approve that item seven to zero. Item seven, governance, uh, anyone has, uh, anything for governance? Board Members, uh, Hershey.
I'll just say I'm excited graduations next week.
Mine starts today.
Yours starts today, mine's next week.
I went to one yesterday.
Um, and you had one yesterday, so mine's not till next week and I'm excited about that. Um, and I haven't had any instruction on how it's going to go, um, but you all can tell me after the meeting. But, um, congratulations, class of 2020.
Wear your shorts underneath your gown because it's going to be hot. That's all right, and bring an umbrella. Okay, anything else for governance? Uh, as Ms. Warres.
Thank you, um, I have, uh, three items. One, yes, congratulations to the class of 2020 and thank you to the principals and staff who have, um, worked very hard to put together celebratory and, um, events that implement social distancing and other safety efforts. I did go to a, a really fantastic ceremony at Alden Road Exceptional Center, um, yesterday, which was wonderful, and I want to say a thank you to Chartwells who over the summer has, um, enhanced their cafeteria with a lot of new furniture and colors and, um, it was a really bright and welcoming and warm place to be. So thank you to our partner Chartwells for those improvements. Um, two other items, one that I, I noted during my, um, earlier comments, but I, I do want to note again here during governance. Um, depending upon the plan that comes back to us from the superintendent, um, I, I still would like for us as a board to work with the superintendent and to resolve together that employees who are able to work from home and, and produce the deliverables that are necessary for their job at home, um, are able to do so during, uh, the, the, um, time in which we are trying to reduce capacity in our buildings and we're trying to, um, distance and, and fewer people in a space, um, you know, the, the better. Um, so I say that because we do have a policy 6.47, which, uh, relates to the workday and work year. And there will be some need to, um, look at this policy, to look at the previous waiver of the policy and to think about its implementation moving forward. So, um, I, I'm happy to, to again, work with Ms. Chastain to do that. Um, but I, I think it's an important thing that, uh, we can do as a board and superintendent team to again, implement the safest work environments, um, that we can, wherever those may be. So, um, I would just ask the board if there is support for such a resolution and, um, if there is a desire for you to work on it or whomever to work on it if there is.
I would let you work on it.
Board Member Joyce?
Yes, so I have a question, um, through the chair to the superintendent. I know that I had a conversation, um, with Dr. Green, um, really, really concerned about, um, teachers who have, you know, medical conditions, who really are putting their self at risk, their family at risk, being in the classroom. And so, um, she'd given me some commentary yesterday, so I'd like her to be able to share that with the board.
Commentary.
Through the chair, Board Member Joyce, um, I'm, I'm going to try to remember the commentary we had yesterday. Uh, we do have to follow, uh, hiring practices. There are guidelines, criteria whenever we are hiring individuals. And when we create a new position such as Duval homeroom, we must follow the criteria that's been put into that document. And, um, using health, excuse me, using health of the individual would probably violate hiring practices. So that is, uh, one of the things that, again, these are negotiated items. Anything that is impacting an employee's working conditions have to be negotiated. So that, that is what I shared.
And forgive me, Chairman, but Ms. Joyce, because you're in the mosh pit, you can't, um, see, but I think I see Ms. Brady nodding behind the superintendent. No. Okay, never mind, just kidding.
Okay.
She was nodding at something else, forgive me.
Anything else? Vice Chair Anderson?
I, I, I'm not sure what we can do in policy, um, and what these hiring practices are. Um, I, I don't know the lea- the legalese around them. Um, may, perhaps Ms. Chastain does, I don't want to put you on the spot, but, um, I really think that this, that it is important for us in this type of situation to have some consideration for these staff members who do have some compromises. I appreciate the guidance that was given in, um, in the email from HR to all staff about their options for, um, FMLA or other types of leave and going through that formalized process. Uh, I think that that's helpful to give them that information. But I do think that it is important for us, I'm looking here at the guidance from the White House, um, for the Phase Reopening Plan. And it says, um, that employers should continue to encourage telework whenever possible and feasible with, with business operations. We should close common areas where personnel are likely to congregate and interact or enforce moderate social distinct, distancing protocols, and we should strongly consider special accommodations for personnel who are members of a vulnerable population. That's Phase Two guidance to employers. Um, so I don't really know what, what the legal language is, but I do think that it's important that we are taking care of these staff people that have been dedicated, professional educators to us. So, um, I, I don't know whether that happens in policy or not, but I, I think it's important to save for the record.
Thank you. Anything else?
Um, I, I just had one other, um, I promise I will be quick, item. But, um, we received some information from the superintendent in follow-up to the workshop on Tuesday. Um, and embedded in that information, um, was uh, an answer to a question that I had asked regarding the, um, risk analysis of COVID-19 infection to the district's, uh, self-insurance medical plan. Um, I just wanted to clarify that as we look at what staff was able to pull together in really, I think, less than 24 hours to answer that question, relies on, um, broad national community spread numbers, not necessarily numbers that are specific to the opening or not of schools. Um, so I do think that this is something that, um, as the actuaries who are working on it, who can do a deeper dive than staff was able to do in 24 hours, um, can, can come back and, and give some more information on that it's important that the board continue to consider, um, certainly some of the, um, numbers that are embedded here, which jumped out at me and, and were some real concern in terms of the potential infection. Um, I think that's, it's a matter of, um, time and diligence with that. Um, Board Member Willie said it earlier and it's, it's worth saying again that just because we delay the start of school or we go to school online, it does not mean that numbers will decline. They have risen while we've been out of school. So, um, the, the community, we are really asking, I am asking, that the community be diligent about what they can do to assist not just Duval County Public Schools, but all of Jacksonville, um, to curb what we're seeing in these increased rates. It'll help us get back to school faster, it will help our community be healthier, it will help us, um, not suffer such devastating loss as we have seen in some other areas and as we are starting to see here. Um, so I, I ask for these numbers because we have fiduciary responsibility as board members and I think we need to be aware. And I think we need to be aware of what's happening with our insurance plan. And I will remind board members that these numbers are absent any other claims that might come to our insurance. And I want to really thank Stan Jurwitz, who, who did a great job of not just putting this together, but also talking me through it today. But I, I do think that we also need to, to keep this front of mind as we're thinking about conversations moving forward and, and what this really reflects in, in individuals in the community. So I have tried over the last little while to end conversations with asking people what brings them joy because it seems like there are lots of downers to a lot of the conversation that we are having now. I started with graduates. And so I will, I will circle back there because our, our children are really remarkable. They are resilient. What our parents and teachers have contributed to our graduates this year and to the children who we know will graduate moving forward is, is remarkable. And, and being a part of this working collegial body with such a strong leader in our superintendent does bring me joy. So thank you Chairman.
Thank you, thank you very much. Anything else for the governance?
Thank you, sorry, if I didn't write it down, it was really, it was going to go out of my mind. Things are just, it's like a sieve lately, have to write it down. Two things. One, one of the things that I'm particularly concerned about as we talk about these reopening plans is our ability to have students and staff test quickly and to be able to get those results in a timely manner. I'm very grateful to the work that was done by the superintendent, the board chair, city council, and being able to get these testing sites in our community that we'll run through tomorrow for, with priority testing for our students and staff. And so I am, I would like to see if we can continue something like that as we move forward so that we can get some quick turnaround. I know Dr. Roll said that the state is able to get, you know, 24-hour results. And I think the only way for us to be able to make safe, responsible decisions in our schools is to be able to shrink that lag time. And so I don't, the request would be at this point, whether or not the superintendent or the chair, if we can follow up with those same folks that were partners before or look at the Department of Health and see what our opportunity is for rapid testing. Maybe the super, does the superintendent have a response through the chair?
Okay, through the chair to Vice Chair Anderson. We are working with another organization to help us focus mainly on our employees and students. But right now, rapid testing is a problem statewide. The, the materials needed or whatever it takes to do rapid testing has been quite challenging. The superintendents, again, we met yesterday and that was like number two on our list. Is there any way for the state to intervene to support school districts in getting rapid testing? So we are working on that as superintendents for all 67 districts. But locally, we are working with another organization. I will, I just need to be transparent, rapid testing is very expensive. And the organizations that are working with us to, to do the testing, they're not connected with rapid testing. It is maybe three to four days, but we are working on it.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I don't, again, I don't know, I know that we worked with the city previously. And so if, if there's opportunity to maybe reconnect with those folks, I would, I would like to maybe explore that.
We, we, we haven't stopped communicating with those folks. This testing that we got for First Coast High School and Frank H. Peterson, that this was federal, through federal. And now after tomorrow, we'll have to go back to working locally. I, I, I will speak with the person that we've been working with to see, is there any opportunity for the federal program to come back and, and work with us?
Thank you, I appreciate that. I do want to express, you know, gratitude to Councilmember Priestley Jackson and the doctors that did work together with us on being able to set up that testing. I think that that is going to be a critical piece of the puzzle for being, being able to execute safely. And so when we're, if, if the guidance from the Department of Health is reserved in any way, then I think those, those kinds of pieces of information, this board is really going to need to be able to make really safe choices for return. The next piece of the puzzle that I think impacts me that I would like to have some more information on, not only are we looking at being able to test quickly and get those results quickly, but then we also have to do these investigations and contact tracing. I know that we've got some personnel on hand to do that. I'm concerned that if we only rely on the Department of Health, that there's not enough personnel to, to do that. And so I would like, again, I've, we've talked about this a couple of times, but I would like to see what additional expense it would be to the district to increase our nursing staff so that we could have some of these folks help make sure that protocols in the building are happening, that temperature screenings are happening, that other types of screening is happening, that we're maintaining all the procedures that we need to maintain and they're available to do the contact tracing quickly. I, I just don't want to overburden a handful of folks. So I'd like to see whether or not, you know, there's, there's opportunity or what that cost might be to the district to increase our nursing staff, even if it was just temporary, temporarily.
I just wanted to add to that very briefly that we could potentially also look at nursing techs and health techs. That's part of the recommendation from Hopkins as well.
I, I would be open to, to that as well or other options just to increase that personnel so that we can, we can have a real comprehensive plan in place. It's testing, it's contact tracing, it's being able to make those decisions quickly to keep people safe.
Dr. Green, your hand.
Through the chair to Vice Chair Anderson. We've already had conversations with our director of nursing and we believe we can develop this, at least for one year, task force to support the rapid, well, I won't say to get to the rapid testing, but at least get the information and once we have it, rapidly determine contact tracing. So we believe we will be able to do that along with the fact that we were just informed this week that we were able to submit some of our expenses through FEMA, which freed up some dollars through the CARES Act. And we've earmarked those dollars for this task force to support our schools.
So we're looking at bringing on more personnel for that?
Yes, I don't want to say nurse.
I understand.
We were looking at techs, we were looking at.
But more bodies, more hands, more eyes, more ears.
To address the whole issue with different schools, supporting schools. If we, again, we're, we're working through developing our matrix. We are taking a stance to look at being more proactive than just being reactive. So if students present any one of the symptoms, we immediately have some, a plan put in place for that student or, or that employee, either way.
Right, I appreciate that. I would hate to see this fall on, you know, another thing on the shoulders of our administrators and, and those folks that are working so hard to be so agile and put so many pieces together in a very complex puzzle. So I think that any additional staff we can put in place to do this and happen quickly and efficiently and safely would help me feel better again about any plan moving forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Woman Joyce.
Hi, thank you. Through the chair to Dr. Green. I wanted to ask a couple of questions on the student enrollment for Duval Home Room table that we received. You had indicated earlier that we have had roughly around 5,000 students sign up for Duval Home Room. And I just wanted to, I'm looking at the chart and I'm seeing like the families at Jack's Beach Elementary, you know, they're, they're signing their kids up. But some of the other schools, elementary schools, especially some in the inner city or in our urban core, not a lot of those families have signed up. So my question to you is what are our administrators, our school-based administrators, you know, how are they actively reaching out to these families to let them know that there is an option? And are we utilizing some of our partners, you know, some of our partners in our, in our district to help do that work? So I just want to make sure that these families know that this is a platform that they can use and that it's not disproportionate with families that have access to computers versus families that maybe do not.
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce. Yes, we are actively letting families know. Part of the registration, simply ask them, do you have a laptop? If the answer is no, then we have staff who will reach out to, say, engage them to get them the equipment or if their Wi-Fi is not. We, as you know, last spring, we provided over 3,000 hotspots. We will continue to support our families in that way. Now, the data that you received was as of eight o'clock this morning. So since then, it's grown to over 5,000. I think your data says it's 4,200, so now we're up to 5,000. One of the other things that we are doing is I requested that ESC make sure that they call every ESC parent that is attending a center school or in what we call a low incident self-contained to know that they have this as an option because if you look at the data, zero have signed up. But we also don't want to deter them because we do know that although these students are medically fragile, they have services that they need. It doesn't deliver as well virtually. They want their, their, their children to be where they're getting their OTPT. And that's why in those center schools, we put Plexiglas barriers for those schools so that we would have that, again, other additional strategy for mitigating. But these are the things that we're doing to let families know you do have this option.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that it was, you know, equitable for everyone, that they would know that there is an option. I know, you know, you can log on to Duval County's.org, our website, and it's there. But, you know, so many of our families don't do that and then they make decisions at the last minute. And that's, you know, a big concern as well is that, you know, we get into, we, we make all the preparations that we're making and then you, you know, get into that week before school starts. And, you know, you have parents coming in saying, oh, my kid's not coming back to school, so we need to get the online thing going. So I just, you want to make sure that we're doing everything we can at this end to make sure that, you know, they understand this is an option. And so we're not necessarily limbered at the end. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Board Member Willie.
Yeah, once again, just want to thank everybody for this conversation. I think it's definitely helpful. And two, just to the superintendent and their staff, I think y'all've done just an amazing job of really trying to look at every single angle that you can and try to listen as much as possible. And I appreciate that we have here a conversation with the union as well. I think as I've been at different organizations and districts across the state and the country, that's always been the issue or has been the issue. So I'm glad we have that, that connection there. I do think, as I mentioned earlier, I think this is, it is bigger than us. And I think, I'm thinking about even before our start date. So maybe about those 14 days or those windows before and what folks are doing before those, before either students go in or we start virtual, whatever we do. I think we, we definitely here in Jacksonville need to make sure that folks know the, the impact of them and of its faces and whatnot and wearing masks and doing all these right things because it's just going to delay it further and further. As we delay a start date, if we don't do what we need to do, and the health professionals are telling us this, TBC, this, Mrs. Wardsmann, John Hopkins, and the NACO, the different health professionals. And it can make so much of a difference if we just do what we need to do to, to keep ourselves safe and keep others safe by wearing masks and, and doing the things we need to do with social distancing. So I, I know that I'm going to start a personal campaign around just that, like just making sure people are educated on what, wearing masks and what that, what that can do for our schools and our environment. And I think that's going to be, that can be helpful. And I think that's going to be helpful as we start to make these decisions. The other piece that I, I wanted to mention as well was just around the connection with our city. I do appreciate some of the testing sites and the council, Mr. Priestley Jackson and other folks stepping up there. And I think us thinking about that as a board, how we're talking to other city council folks about what, what does it look like when schools go back in? How, how can the city support? How can our council folks support what we're doing on this side to ensure that the communities are safe and we can do what we need to do from an education standpoint? So thank you for the conversation today. I appreciate even within this environment, having a choice for me to be here and do it virtually or telephonically is an important choice for me and my family. And that's exactly what we're trying to do for our families and our teachers and others when it comes to this decision that will make themselves. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Board Member Willie. Seeing nothing else, is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Hershey.
Second.
Second by Board Member Asher Smith-Wares. Any discussion, all in favor of adjournments? Aye.
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 Opposed, action, the meetings adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
We now join our regularly scheduled program already in progress.
And this has changed the entire complexion and the mood of what's happening over here. It's amazing what happens if you put humid on the top of those rockets. The visitor's center.